You're all set, Mike?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on April 13th, and I'll call the Town Council Meeting to order. And if we could please take a moment of silence to reflect on all those that currently serve and have in the past enabling us a healthier and safer environment. Thank you all. In accordance with Mass General Law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in our audience is recording, could you please identify yourself?
I don't see any hands.
Thank you, Don. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually via a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Jeannie, anyone have signed up for public comments?
No one has.
Okay, we'll move right along to council comments.
Mike, through the chair.
Ralph, please.
I know it's been a while since we did the Capitol Projects last year, and I was wondering if at one of the next couple of meetings, we could bring up those items so that we could further discuss them the way we had talked about.
Okay, I will, um, I'll work with Jeannie. I believe that could classify under old business, and we'll look at it for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? None at this time. Then, actually, Mary, Town Manager's report this evening?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So, as you can tell from my brief report, we're still in the midst of budget season. The preparation of the budget and working with the Financial Oversight Committee is pretty much the dominant issue of the last week or so since we last met. The draft budget that I gave to the council back in earlier in March is on the town website for the public's review and questions. The local vaccine clinics have now completed their service. It was kind of a bittersweet moment for the Health Department and the emergency management people. I think they were very happy to be able to meet that need in the community and sad at the same time that their services won't be allowed to continue based on the new regulations from the governor. The master, the draft master plan was distributed to you earlier, I guess, last week, one day, by separate email. I did that so that you could see the progress that's been made so far and the observations of the town staff and the people who participated in those focus groups have been incorporated into the various chapters to which they apply. So, looking forward to that finished document. I think a great deal of work has gone into that project and very proud of the work that Bethany has done in coordination with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and the consultant that they worked with on this project. Also advised you earlier that the 2020 Town Report is available. I believe there's a copy in each of your mail slots if you're around to pick it up. The Rec Department is going full steam ahead. They are planning a farmer's market event for May. There's a, they had an Easter egg hunt last weekend that was very successful, 145 participants. They've begun registrations for all spring sports and the Pine Knoll Camp activities. And as usual, as soon as they open the doors for registration, it sells out almost immediately. So, people are very happy with the programming up there, as am I. And I think it's providing a great outlet for children and their adult family members to get some relief from this COVID pandemic. I continue to work through some issues with the Eastern Hampden County Veterans Service Board. There's a district of which four communities are members, and there's been some controversy lately about whether or not the proper certifications exist and whether or not the district has been in compliance with the terms of the intermunicipal agreement that governs it. The Town Select Board in Munson is meeting tonight, and I understand that one of the items on their agenda is to take a vote whether or not they want to depart the district as a town. If they do that, it will sort of expedite a decision that I'll have to make and bring to the council's attention about whether East Long Meadow wants to remain or hook up with another community, and that would entail quite a bit of work. The reason it's a problem is, as I've reported previously, East Long Meadow pays roughly 56% of the annual budget for that district, and Munson, I think, is next in line at 22%. So, if Munson were to leave, obviously, that 22% of the overall budget would have to be made up by the remaining communities for fiscal '22. And that would be something that would require some serious thought and analysis. Also, obviously, the Westcom Board of Directors, our Regional Emergency Response Communication Center continues to meet regularly. In fact, yesterday, they held a reception as it was the first day of the week of the Telecommunications Personnel Week, the proclamation that you signed or allowed me to sign at the last meeting that we discussed. So, Chief Williams and I attended that, and several proclamations were read honoring the service of independent, some of the independent cases that were handled by these dispatchers, one of which involved a fire in Chickapi. And the young lady who dispatched the services there ended up being credited with a life-saving messaging to the Chickapi Fire Department. So, it was a very happy event. And that district office seems to be improving. The director reported to us that they, their training is going well. They currently have five vacancies for full-time dispatchers that they expect to fill by July 1st. So, all things are coming together there. Back to in East Long Meadow, of course, our Finance Department is preparing an application for bond anticipation notes, which Steve can answer any questions about if you choose. But one of the reasons that we wanted to go forward with that note now is because interest rates are low, and we'd also like to get started on some of those fiscal year '20 as well as '21 capital projects. So, to Counselor Page's point, if there are particular items in the capital budget that was approved for fiscal '21 that you don't want to proceed with, the sooner Steve knows that, the better, because that will alter the amount that we attempt to borrow under this bond anticipation note. Otherwise, discussions continue with union representatives for the town unions that are still negotiating their terms of their contracts. And that's the end of my report, the written report that was composed on Thursday afternoon or Friday morning. But since then, we've had some bad news in that the core network systems that support the communications in town crashed on Saturday. Ryan Quimby, through his really remarkable dedication, spent 14 hours overnight Saturday into Sunday morning doing what I jokingly called "brain surgery." Our core network system has two brains. Ryan effectively has kept us operating by relocating the brain from one tower into the other tower, which had failed, and re-attaching, if you will, all the circuits so that the proper cards are read by the existing brain that works. I will tell you that this is a $200,000 project. It's on our capital recommendations for fiscal '22. But in light of the fact that it's an emergency, because if the remaining viable brain crashes, the town will be effectively out of business. So, after speaking yesterday very briefly with the Town Council President and advising him of this situation, we've decided to go forward and on the statewide contract order, the hardware to replace what has failed. And I've been discussing with the Finance Director about whether or not we need to ask the council for a free cash transfer immediately or if we will have sufficient turnbacks from fiscal '21 accounts so that we won't have to invade free cash. So, that's a decision that will be made within the next, probably, certainly, within the next month. But I want you to be aware that that will, of course, come off the capital projects for fiscal '22 because the equipment has been ordered and will be installed as a result of this emergency. There's also been a significant amount of grant research that I've had to do in the last few weeks. They deal with community compact grants that go back to 2017. There were a couple of grants awarded to East Long Meadow under their Best Practices Program. Unfortunately, neither of those grants was, let's say, properly tracked and accounted for to the Commonwealth. So, now they're looking for some information in order to close the grant. And as you might imagine, it's rather difficult to piece together things that happened four years ago. But in any case, we're working on that with the Division of Local Services in the hopes that the inability to complete those projects won't negatively affect the town going forward on future applications from that source. I do have a recreation update. Donna Prather sends me these emails that give me bullet lists of what's going on in recreation, and I just want to share a couple of the items with you. They currently have 789 children enrolled in spring sports. They have to order additional equipment due to more registrations and COVID precautions. Swimming lessons are going extremely well. Private lessons began last night. Camp and aquatics planning for the summer is going well, and they're ahead of schedule. They have nine vendors for that farmer's market that I mentioned a few moments ago. That will be May 14th from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. They're planning a drive-in movie night in conjunction with the Council on Aging for next Friday. It's an intergenerational event, hopefully, to be attended by grandparents together with their grandchildren, and it's free. April vacation programs will be starting next week. They have a backyard fun event planned for Pine Knoll, a lifeguarding course, kids' basketball, and many, many more things. Jordy is finalizing a trip calendar for Teen Adventure Camp. And they have currently come upon an opportunity in working with Bethany for application for three grants, which will all come from the National Parks Association if we're successful, and it could result in excess of $600,000 in new funding for projects either at Pine Knoll or other recreation sites in town. So, that was very good news. Lastly, met today with the Health Department staff regarding a pending request for proposals to obtain bids for the waste hauling contract. Republic's contract extends through June 30 of 2022, but we want to get this RFP out within the next 45 days in the hopes that any vendor who's interested will be able to plan accordingly by having essentially a year in advance to purchase equipment that would be necessary to handle East Long Meadow roots. The trash collection issue is very problematic. We get dozens of complaints weekly consistently. We hear the explanations from our vendor. Things are very difficult for them, as well as for those people who don't get their trash picked up or who have problems with residue of trash left on the streets. So, we're trying very hard to find a happy medium. But the, if we change vendors, the cost will be significantly higher, several hundred thousand dollars higher. But we'll do the best we can on, depending on the responses we get to this RFP. So, that's what, that's what the news is from my seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Questions, anyone? Then we'll move on to approve-
Through the chair. Mike?
Sorry, Tom?
Yep, thank you. Mary, just two quick questions. The first is, you stated that the Rec Department has had an overabundance of applications, and they're full. Does, do they allow for residents to be accepted first and then open it up to non-residents?
Yes.
Thank you. The second question has to do with the master plan.
Yes.
I participated in one of the sessions, and I also provided correction information to the committee. And it's not included in the last draft I saw, and I just don't know who to go to to see why not, why the information's not there. That's correct?
Well, the drafters of that, as I understand it, are the consultant that was hired by Pioneer Valley. But if you want to send me the information, I'll forward it to Bethany, and maybe she can direct it through Pioneer Valley to the consultant. Not certain exactly what it is that you're referring to, so-
Well, I don't want to get into it.
I'll take care of it for you.
No, that's great. I don't want to get into it in our meeting, but we'd like to have someone to follow up to find out why it wasn't corrected.
Sure.
Okay. Ralph?
Just a quick point. With Don not here, if it's okay with everyone else, I'll just take his spot as we go through for the motions. So, whenever Don's name comes up, you'll hear me speak, if that's okay.
It works.
We work on that subject matter. So, we'll move over to approve the open session minutes from March 23rd. And I believe if Kathy comes off on mute.
I move to approve the March 23, 2021, open session minutes.
I will second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing and seeing none, we'll roll call vote with Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Is that a yes, Pat?
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from March 24th. Ralph, will you do that motion for us?
Yep. I move to approve the March 24, 2021, open session minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, again, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing and seeing none, we'll roll call vote, starting with Tom?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Ralph?
Yes.
Those minutes are passed. Moving along, approval of the March 30, open session minutes. Tom, a motion, please?
Absolutely. I motion to approve the March 30, 2021, open session minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing and seeing none, Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
And our last group of minutes, the approval of March 30, executive session minutes. And I believe Ralph's gonna make that motion.
I make a motion to approve the March 30, 2021, executive session minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion regarding the executive session minutes? Hearing and seeing none, Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. No, nothing to discuss under Communications and Correspondence this evening. We have no public hearings. Under orders of the day, there are no licensing matters, but we do have financial matters. And I'd like to ask Don Mackey, excuse me, Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I just wanted to compliment Jackie on those minutes. There's four minutes and not a single correction, adjustment, anything. It means a wonderful job that Jackie does. Thank you, Jackie.
Yes, thank you.
Agreed.
We all agree. We know how hard she works. It's not an easy job. So, under financial matters, I'd ask Don Mackey to find Jonathan Torshin if we could bring him into the meeting. We can discuss some of the CPC funding issues.
Sure, Mike. He's on his way.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Jonathan. How are you?
Good, very good.
How's your voice holding out tonight? Good?
I think so. I think I'm gonna be on the agenda for a little bit here, so I'll be with you guys for some time.
All right. It's all good. So, would you like to bring us up to date on the first issue for the CPC funding regarding the $13,400?
Absolutely. So, this CPC funding will be going to the Norcross House. If you all remember, about a month, a month ago, the council approved a separate application for the Norcross House that had to deal with the porch. This application has to deal with replacing, repainting, and kind of refurbishing the carriage door. So, if anybody's, you know, if you're all familiar with the property, there's a carriage house in the back area of the property. It's been under, this door has been under a little bit of distress and just been, you know, weather's gotten to it and wear and tear. So, they are asking for at least $13,400. It would be coming from the same contractor that they used from the porch, for the porch project, for the porch reimbursement. So, this would be going, and we would expect, if approved, a fairly quick turnaround time in making those updates.
Okay. What I'd like to do before we enter discussion, I'd like to get a motion on the floor, please. Marilyn, could you bring that forward?
Certainly. I move to approve the Community Preservation Act funding of $13,400 from the Historic Preservation Account for repairs to the Norcross Center Carriage House.
I'll second that.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second, and we can open up the floor for discussion. Ralph?
So, Jonathan, in the letter that you sent, it recommend the Norcross House application for a new door to be located within the carriage house. That's in your letter to Mike. On page five, under project expenses, it talks about painting the exterior of the carriage house. And then the proposal, which is on page eight, also lists painting of the carriage house. I think painting falls under maintenance, and I don't believe maintenance is truly allowed. I mean, this is a true maintenance-type deal, and I don't believe that's allowed under CPC funding. I don't see anything on here that says a replacement of an interior door. I mean, it's $11,750 to paint it. I just, I don't think, I don't think painting's allowed under CPC funding. I think if it was a replacement of an interior door, as what the letter stated, and it was done specifically to keep it under historical issues, I would say yes, or to bring it back to historical. I just, I think from the letter that we got and then the proposals that were submitted in the application, it sounds like it's two completely different items.
So, what I, what I meant to address in the letter was that this would be, what I meant to say when replacing, I meant the paint sort of replacing the door or kind of refurbishing the door. So, I might have, probably should have used slightly better language. So, when vetting this project in particular, I took it to the CPA organization, the nonprofit organization, that kind of gives me technical support and advice. They felt comfortable with it. It's sort of at the discretion, you know, of our committee, and of course, obviously, the final say is Town Council. To me, it's sort of like some of the projects that we've seen, reasonable minds could come to a conclusion that this is a capital investment, which is okay, but also reasonable minds could come with it. This is a maintenance. I would say that this is a one-time payment. This would not be, we would not be recurring or, you know, repeatedly, you know, painting the Norcross House or painting this door. This would be kind of a one-time capital update. And then the hope would be that the friends of the Norcross House, once kind of things jump up and they're able to reopen the Norcross House post-COVID, will be able to have the resources to make these type of investments.
So, Mike, can I follow up?
Absolutely.
So, we're talking about a door. I'm assuming it's the front of the Norcross House. It says, "The proposal is paint exterior of carriage house for $11,750. Replace rotted exterior trim for $1,650." If they're charging almost $12,000 to paint the door, I believe that's for the entire carriage house. I don't think it's just a door. I don't think it's one area. I think it's, it's a repainting of the whole place.
Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. Just for further information through the chair, Ralph, we, I attended the CPC meeting when this particular project was discussed, and there are pictures that are all included with the exterior of the carriage house. And the town has invested a substantial amount of dollars into this historic project in the past. And this is a situation where there's not a whole lot of dollars coming in to fund these things that actually restore the buildings. We need to keep them in good stead, otherwise, we've wasted the money we've invested. And so, I think it's a gray area, but whether it's repair, maintain, restore, the focus is to try to protect. And as you look at the pictures, there are areas that are rotting. And so, these areas have to be repaired and then restored and then painted to protect going forward. So, it's a gray, gray area for sure. I don't look at it as maintenance when we're looking at the Norcross House. They don't have a town budget to support them. And so, it is what it is. But I think that's why the CPC told Jonathan to come here and recommend it because they all agreed that this was a good use of the historical fund.
What I will, just going off those points very quickly, there is not a lot, you know, when I took over as chair, there's not a lot of rules that were put in place at the local level for CPC. What my hope is, is to, and this is gonna be a kind of a longer-term project for the committee, to develop a very comprehensive master plan that very specifically lays out criteria and, you know, highlighting what would, you know, be approved under CPC funds and will-
I believe, yeah, it throws up for a minute. So, Pat?
I have two questions. The first is, I'm confused. I keep hearing that this was the exterior door of the carriage house. But then I hear it might be an interior door of the Norcross House. And I just want to clarify that we are talking about the exterior of the carriage house.
This will, this project will take place entirely in the carriage house.
Carriage house.
That is a building that is set towards the back of the, of the property.
Okay, my second observation would be that I don't get the impression that Ralph is against, or that any other counselor is against this project per se. It's only the source of funding. And I would propose that possibly the council or the town could look at this as a capital improvement project that would be paid for from town funds rather than CPC funds if the CPC funds are questionable. Thank you.
Marilyn? Marilyn?
Through the chair, this is not a town building. Norcross belongs, is under the jurisdiction of the Friends of the Norcross, doesn't belong to the town. The town has right of first refusal if, for some reason, the Friends of the Norcross chose to not manage the property anymore. So, there's no budget. There's no, the only way that they succeed in getting help from the town is through the CPC funds, and that would be the historical fund. You know, we've gone through COVID. They haven't had any fundraising. You know, they're running short of dollars, I suppose. Anyway, that's, you know, it's not a town building.
I would just add that we all know that there's a door that needs to be placed. There's numerous trim pieces that need to be replaced. And anything that's replaced does have to be painted for two reasons. One, to preserve the new product, and one, to make everything match. So, I think Jonathan was saying that, coming forward from this point, that it would be more methodically laid out exactly what would be, what would be, how the funds were allocated, how much maybe toward a door and how much toward painting. But I would ask, Ralph, you have another question?
Actually, I just want to make a point. If it's gonna go the way the estimate is, which is paint the exterior of the carriage house, I'd just like that laid out that that's what we're approving. We're approving the painting of the carriage house. I mean, that's what all the proposal in all says, and if that's what we're gonna approve, let them paint the whole carriage house if it needs it. I would, I'd rather go instead of off of the letter that Jonathan had given, which talks about an interior door, the proposals specifically state painting of the carriage house. So, if we make a motion to allow the funding for the repairs and the painting of it, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. One quick, there's a proposal in our documentation for this evening's meeting from Larry V. Holmes, and there are two items that are highlighted in yellow. And it's $11,750 for painting the exterior of the carriage house. And then the other one is replace rotted exterior trim on carriage house. The combination of those two numbers meets the $13,400. So, those are the items that we would be appropriating tonight.
Pat?
Mike, I would like to observe that the motion actually does say repairs to the Norcross Center Carriage House, which might be enough to satisfy everyone. It covers it.
Marilyn?
I'm sorry if we keep raising my hand. I just received a text from Donna Martinez, who's the president of the Norcross Board, and she's in the audience, and she says that there's a little confusion here. They are repairing, not due to the fact that the gut, because the gutters weren't installed when the initial restoration was done, and all the drainage from the water is what deteriorated the sides of the carriage house. So, that's why this restoration has to be done.
So, I would ask, I'm sorry, Ralph, you have another?
No, actually, Mike, I would just, I'd like to put out an amendment to the motion that, for the Historical Preservation Account for Repairs and Painting to the Norcross, to the Norcross Center Carriage House. So, that way there, we add the wording "and" painting in.
Okay, so, the original motion that's on the floor right now was made by Marilyn. Would you want to rescind the motion and rephrase it?
I will rescind my previous motion and rephrase it that I move to approve the Community Preservation Act funding of $13,400 from the Historic Preservation Account for Repairs and Painting to the Norcross Center Carriage House.
Thank you. And Tom, you were the original first, second. Are you willing to rescind your second and, second Marilyn's new motion?
I would rescind my first, second, and also approve what Marilyn has suggested. I think that's a great idea, second that.
Thank you all. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Motion passes. Jonathan, if you want to take us into the second piece of the PCC funding involving the 134-722.
So, this will be a project to resurface the high school track. This process is needed every approximately eight to 10 years. So, the high school track, I believe, was put in place about close to 10 or so years ago, give or take. So, now we're coming up to that point. About $28,000. So, the total project is $162,722.49, and $28,000 will be coming out of the high schools or the school departments revolving rental fund. So, that will be funding a part of it. There's been quotes by Gale Associates, which is, I believe, the firm that the school department uses on a regular basis for other projects to get quotes. There should also be pictures attached to it as well. This is another project that I would say, I think, it's a creative way to use CPC funds. What I would caution the council or the future council or future in advance would be that the idea of, you know, every eight to 10 years coming back to the CPC might not perhaps be the best idea. But right now, I think that it is a well-needed, a well-needed and a well-deserved project. But we don't like getting into the habit of having reoccurring applications coming to us. One-time applications make sense because we have a lot of broad, kind of broad authority on awarding or recommending, I should say, this money, because there aren't a ton of rules in place at the local level. But again, I'm hoping to have a very strong, very detailed master plan developed in the coming months to prioritize what the committee wants to see, as well as perhaps looking at areas that we would prioritize more or less of in the future. With that, I can take some questions on this application.
Okay, before we open up for discussion, I'd just like to add one piece here that I physically went over to the high school, and I spent some time looking at the track and did a little bit of investigation on my own on what's taking place here. And to maybe put this in an easy phraseology, that this is a little bit like, before a car deteriorates to the point where you can't repair it, it's not a bad idea to put some rust proofing on it, but it needs to be done at a point in time prior to the damage starting. So, the track itself, to me, appears to be in pretty good shape, but if we skip this process, we might be looking at a new track sooner than later, and a new track would run north of $264,000. So, that's what I can share with the council. What I'd like to do at this point is put a motion on the floor and then open it up for further discussion.
I move to approve Community Preservation Act funding of $134,722.49 from the Undesignated Account for the resurfacing of the high school track.
I will second the motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, and any further discussion? Ralph?
Two questions. I don't know if it's for Jonathan or for Steve. One is, why did we choose to ask for funding out of the Undesignated Account instead of the Open Space and Rec? And do we have a balance on the Open Space and Recreation Account? Is there enough in there that would cover it?
Yeah, I'm happy to update the numbers. We have seven, as of, this was back in February, we have about $737,939.76. We've not, you'll see that, I think, later on the agenda, there is a discussion on a withdrawal of some monies. We have not, over the last, since I've been chair, since fall of 2019, we've approved a very fairly small amount of money between, you know, membership renewal, administrative costs, and then a few applications, minusing the debts and bonds that we have. We've approved only about $30,000 money, so we haven't tapped the Undesignated Fund during that period of time. The motion to have it come out of the Undesignated Fund was made by a committee member on the committee at the time. The Undesignated Fund has a bit more money, and so, it's a bit more of a cushion than compared to the Recreation Fund, which has $271,078.96, so quite a bit more is in that Undesignated Fund.
I don't know if Mike's around. I think he's gone. So, my follow-up would be, the Undesignated Fund can be spent at any time, anywhere, so that if an open space came up available, we could use that. If recreation came up, if we had a big historic, we could use the Undesignated. That's why I would be more apt to use this out of the Recreation portion of it, because if another recreation project came up later on and we needed more money, we could take that out of Undesignated. But if we don't use it from the Recreation and we need money somewhere else, we can't take from Recreation and use it to purchase land. That's my thought on it.
Counselor, just so we're aware, the second item on the agenda was coming out of the open space, and that's $180,000. And as of today, Jonathan's right, it's about $260,000 in the Undesignated for open space. So, if you take that out, you're at $80,000, and you wouldn't be able to do the 134 at that point in time. One of the two projects would have to be adjusted, and so, if you're doing all of them, you'd have to take some money out of the Undesignated anyways.
Right, but that one was taken off right at the moment.
Right.
The second one, yeah, the 180 right in front of us.
He doesn't know.
So, I would look, like I said, to take this out of the Open Space and Rec. And like I said, if further we need anything else, we've always got Undesignated that we can use anywhere.
Yeah. In lieu of Mike not being here, I guess I will step in and try to assist in the running of this meeting. So, Pat has a question?
Thank you, Mr. Temporary Chairman. My question, my question revolves around the cost. I'm looking at statements that say that this project isn't just $134,000, but it's $162,000.
Right.
Replace the entire track would only be another $80,000 or $90,000 to replace it entirely. Somewhere around $260 plus, a little more perhaps. So, I'm looking at, have we, did we get competitive bids for this? This is, it just seems like to put a coating on a track and charge $162,000 is a lot of money.
So, Tom?
Yes.
So, Pat, from what I can understand, this is the first step. They've pretty much tried to narrow it down and guesstimate about what they think it's gonna cost. Gale Associates, from what I read, it's gonna be their job to actually send out a request for proposals and get bids and all on it. So, I don't think the final price is actually known. I think Gale Associates, once we hire them, will send it out, get the bids, compile them all together. That sounded like it's part of their job to do all of that, if we so choose to hire them.
Yes, go ahead, Pat.
I would offer that that's a good faith estimate and probably somewhere in the neighborhood of what they really expect it to be. From my perspective, that's an awful lot of money for a track that where that really looks to be in fine shape when I, when I, when I look at it, and I did.
Can I offer something through Tom? Mike is on my phone. He, his internet service dropped him, so I'm trying to get him a phone number so he can call in. But Bruce Fenny and Gordon Smith are in the audience, so if Don could bring them in, they might be able to shed some light on this project. It's been on the capital project list for the town for a period of time, and they might be able to enlighten the council a little bit with their thoughts regarding the project. Meanwhile, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to get Mike for us.
Yeah, Don, you can bring in Gordon and Greg. Yep.
They're here. Mary, Mike can give me a call if he wants.
Okay, Don, I'm not sure his phone is working. She, but I'll tell him that certainly. And Tom, Bruce is available also.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Does anyone, I think both Gordon and Greg have been listening. Can you add anything additional to the conversation?
They're muted.
Just unmuted. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Page actually is correct. We would probably have Gale Associates send it out for a competitive bid, and they were the ones who actually, I believe, were the owner or project manager for the original full stadium project. And so, they have given us a good faith estimate, and then if it is approved tonight, we would go out to bid and hopefully come under that price. But it's a, what Mr. Page was describing is the process, and Mr. Fenny probably could speak to what the cost of a fully new track might be. I'm assuming that it's gonna be over $260,000.
Yes, Bruce, if you'd like to comment?
Yeah, so Gordon's correct. So, if we don't move forward with this now, the track is worn and it becomes brittle, and that's noted in, I believe, Gale Associates' proposal. So, it costs upwards. You'd actually have to grind down the total existing surface down to the original pavement and start fresh again. So, therefore, the cost is gonna be obviously much higher if we wait too much long.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, I see Mike is back, so I'll turn the meeting back over to Mike.
He's sort of back.
I guess. Are you available, Mike? Nope. Okay. I just have one comment myself, and I'd like to ask at this time. It's unclear to me as to who's gonna maintain that track. I'm in support of this project, but one of the things that I've noticed over my visits to the track area is that there's no one on site managing the folks that use the fields. And someone there were bringing food, Gatorade and other drinks on the track. And I know that's not allowed, but, you know, it's great to see our town folks using it, but they're not following the rules, and they're not reading the signs. And I think that may have, have an impact on the track deteriorating this quickly. In addition, when I did walk the track and I spoke to the folks that use it on a regular basis, including the coaches, they noticed that the inside lanes are used a lot by folks who come to the track to jog. And they have asked them not to use the first two inside lanes because it has a tendency to, I'll use the term drop-off. So, what's happened to the track is that you have a high side and a low side now. Lane eight being a high side and lane one being a low side, which is problematic, and it needs to be corrected.
Or Mike?
I'm not sure if Mike is back, but go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, no, I think it's a fine line, Tom, and I appreciate your comments about monitoring. But our philosophy has always been to open up to the public just as much as sporting events. So, you know, agreed the trash is somewhat of an issue. It certainly would be cost prohibitive to, you know, fund personnel that would be there all the time. But we do monitor that as well as the DPW. But I would say, you know, at least my philosophy, and I believe the rest of the school committees and Gordon's as well, and he can speak to it, is to let the public use, use the facility because there's that much advantage health-wise to use it as well, so.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. I do agree that the public, it's great to see them using the track, but my concern, again, goes back to the maintenance of it. If we don't set some sort of standards, and it's not clear whether the DPW or the school is gonna be responsible for maintaining it, in my mind. And if someone could step up and say it's our responsibility, that would be great.
So, just a couple of points, if I may.
Go ahead, Gordon. Go ahead, Gordon.
Mr. Henry, you had a question first, so.
No, please, I'll wait.
Okay, um, so to the point that Greg had made, when the track was completed or, um, was close to being completed in twenty eleven, I, I think it was the rec department, but it certainly was, um, a booster group that had asked that we make a commitment to leaving it open for the public. To make the facility more of a public facility and not necessarily just a high school athletic team facility. Um, and so as Greg said, we've tried to keep that promise and goodwill throughout. And actually had written in, um, that we would keep the lights on, um, basically to about, I think, nine or ten o'clock up through Thanksgiving when football ends its season. Um, and that would allow the public who might want to use the track after a football practice during the fall to use it. Um, in terms of the maintaining of the track, it's actually a, a partnership. We partner with DPW for the maintenance of our buildings, um, and certainly of our grounds and now for the track. So most of that, um, maintenance money comes through the rental account. But then if that's exhausted, um, it would come through school department funds. And that's something that Bruce, Joe, uh, Pam Blair and I discuss about many different projects that, um, happen through the year in terms of maintenance. We also, for the field, have an annual maintenance program whereby annually, uh, the group that actually I believe Bruce, if I'm correct, that put in the field comes out and goes over the turf. Um, first with a magnet, uh, to pull up anything that might be, any foreign object that might be on there after use um, for about six months, excuse me, and then goes through and redistributes pellets and repairs any area of the field that it can. We don't have that same annual maintenance for the track. We've been doing that, um, both with DPW, um, and the school department. In terms of monitoring the use, any school, rec or rental function always has a site supervisor on, onsite while that's going on. The one thing we have not funded and has been discussed a little bit tonight is keeping someone on there, say, when the track is not being used by those groups. If that's something that, you know, the school committee wants to discuss or the town council and the school committee wants to discuss, I'm sure that, um, everybody would be willing to discuss that, but it, it might be.
Pat, you have a question?
Yes. People need, people that bring proposals to us need to realize that we start in ignorance. And we really rely on what we read. And two of the things I read was that a new track would cost us upwards of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And I took that to mean somewhere around two hundred and sixty thousand, maybe two hundred and seventy five thousand. I'm now hearing from Bruce and I, and maybe I'm misinterpreting that it would be well north of that. Well, that would make a difference in, in comparing one sixty two versus two sixty. The other, the other thing is that we read that there really is no maintenance required for the track itself. That the maintenance is, is negligible. And I take that to heart as well. And so it's interesting to hear that there might be some maintenance issues that were not in the, in the proposal. So I would support, uh, Tom's concern that says, you know, make sure we know who's going to do this. Gordon, I'm not sure if you were even here when we had the issues of the tennis courts. And the tennis courts, it was, nobody was taking care of the tennis courts. And it was, it was, and this was under the old administration. It was between the school and the DPW. And it was, uh, it was, it was uncomfortable because they were allowed to, to go south. And, uh, so that's, those are my two comments and, and, uh, I'm interested to hear as, as I hear more information.
Does anyone else have any input? Ralph?
I just wanted to point out through all the information, which was fantastic, uh, through Gale associates. Um, I did notice that they came out and looked at it. That was two thousand and nineteen. So back then they were saying that we needed to do this. We're now closing on two years further down the road, so, um, I'm for the project. I would just like to see the funds come out of the open space and rec portion of the community preservation uh, money rather than the undesigned needed.
Jonathan?
Just two quick comments. It's important to note that every application, one of, I mean, we don't have a significant level of criteria, but one of the criteria would be the, uh, the money should go towards something that is opened up to the community. So it's important that the, the track is not just used by high schoolers, but is open up to the community or individuals who might be walking it or, um, you know, non-town, you know, events taking place there. So that makes it so that it's, it's able to, one, just one comment about, um, where the money would come out of. Um, you know, it's a pleasure of the council. The only thing that I would say is the one thirty four would kind of, it would basically, the two seventy one that we have in open space and record about cut it in half. So it might take a little bit longer to bring it back. And the one benefit, um, if we did do it out of undesigned preserved open space right now is that we can always bond major, major projects in the future. So if there is a significant recreation project that comes down, um, or, or another project that comes down, we can bond against the, um, the, uh, the, the amount, the tax that comes out of the property taxes, the surcharge for future years, which is we've done with them, with the two other projects that we currently have, um, that we're paying bonds down for.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Steve, I think you mentioned earlier that those funds may not be available and we would have to take them out of two funds.
He's muted.
Uh, apparently I was mistaken. I thought that we had another item on the agenda tonight. That was a hundred and eighty thousand. That would have affected it. But since we don't, it should be okay.
Okay, Jonathan, do you want to change, uh, the amendment here?
So I don't think it's up to Jonathan, um, as far as him amending it, but I would make a motion to amend that the money come from the open space and rec account instead of the undesigned needed.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, but the motion made and seconded, discussion? Okay, I see no further discussion. So can someone make a motion here, please?
So, Tom, actually, that is the motion. We have to call a roll call vote on the amendment first.
All right, let's do a roll call vote on the amendment that Ralph presented and seconded by Marilyn. Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
No.
Myself, yes. So that motion passes. Mike's still unavailable, it looks like. So we'll move on to, uh, the original motion. And I think, who made that motion?
I made the original one.
Yeah, Kathy did. I think, I believe we have to rescind that motion now and the second, no?
Just going to vote on the motion as amended.
Thank you, Ralph. Okay, so we can move on from here.
It's a roll call vote.
Yep, Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Mike is still not present. Okay. Jonathan, uh, you want to read the next motion or your next project?
Yes, uh, so this will be a withdrawal of the, uh, one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that was appropriated, uh, to the, um, to the rec department. Uh, this was taken place all the way back in February of twenty twenty. This was, um, in a time where we all might remember the pre-COVID time. Uh, so this project had been coming into work. This was an idea, this was a, it was going to be an architectural study. Uh, that was the only thing that was appropriated towards this. Uh, and to my knowledge and after doing some investigating with it, uh, the money has yet to be appropriated. And there was also, um, it was found that past plans for Heritage Park would be sufficient. So there would not be a need for the one hundred and thirteen for the architectural study. So per the CPC rules, uh, it has to be spent for that specific purpose. It can't necessarily be moved around, even if it's in the same project. If it's, if it's stated specifically on the application that it's used for, you know, objective A, it has to be used for objective A or objective B. Uh, so this is simply just, I think, um, I, I don't think the money was moved, um, ninety nine percent sure of that. I've been told that, uh, previously, so this is just sort of putting it on paper that we're withdrawing it officially. Uh, this is not a reflection of, you know, the, the CPC's commitment to Heritage Park and other, uh, open space areas in town. Uh, I've spoken to a number of, you know, interested parties about Heritage Park. And, you know, we look forward to, you know, looking at future projects potentially in Heritage Park. Uh, and we've been very supportive of Heritage Park and the Recreation Department and Commission in the past. Uh, and I, at least as I'm chair, I'm going to continue doing that. So this is just more of a correction of just putting back money that didn't end up needing to be used for specifically.
Thank you, Jack. So I guess the motion would sit with me.
Actually, Tom, if you want me to read it, consider your, your, your. I motioned to rescind the February eleventh, twenty twenty town council motion that the council authorize Community Preservation Act funding requests for a hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and one dollars for purposes of the Recreation Commission to be able to enter into RFPs for engineering and design of phase one of the proposed project at Heritage Park and the money be spent out of the undesigned needed funds account.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We now have a roll call vote. Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that motion passes? I believe.
Tom, excuse me, I'm going to, it's Don. I'm just going to jump in and let you know Mike is coming over here to, uh, try to join the meeting from the studio. He can't get any internet service, so he should be here in seven or eight minutes.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Yep.
Okay. So I think that's the last item under financial matters.
No, uh, we have a third quarter budget update.
Yes, I'm sorry. You, you're correct. So I guess that's Steve's presentation?
Counselor, kind of hope you are saying we're done. That's good. This is through the third, March thirty first, through the end of March, uh, twenty twenty one. It's, uh, the first page of it is basically a quick overview of what we're looking at. Revenue wise, we're about seventy two percent of what we budgeted, which is pretty good considering COVID. And, uh, there's always a factor that you got to take in of real estate and personal property that's delinquent. Uh, the major source, or a major source of our town revenue is state aid. They pay that every month. That's been coming through, so we're, we're pleased with that. And then it just says when the bills, motor vehicle just went out in May, was due in March, so we're still collecting on that too. So, uh, the expenditure to highlight, the expenditures, it's eighty eight percent. That seems higher. Uh, it's really not. The school department encumbers a bulk of their budget right away, so that ends up, uh, that there's eleven million dollars, roughly ten million of it is the, um, school encumbrances. So if you take that out and the encumbrances out, our expenditures are about sixty nine percent of the expenditure budget. So we're, we're doing very well as a town, I think. And the other part of the expense side is that we pay our retirement liability upfront. The retirement's three point eight million dollars that we pay in July, so that, that always skews it. As we get closer towards the end of the fiscal year, you'll see that even out.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Ralph?
So Steve, is there any departments or any areas within the town, uh, that you see any concern? Or do you think they're all within the, the parameters where they should be?
I think we're in good shape. I think that there are, um, there, with the turnbacks we have, like we do every year, we'll cover any deficits. So I don't think we'll have to go into, into stabilization or free cash at, at least to a great degree. Uh, obviously, like Mary mentioned in the, in her report, the, uh, core for the computer is, is a pretty good hit. But it's an emergency that came up and I don't, even, even with that, Mary and I talked and I don't necessarily think that we won't be able to handle that with our turnbacks either. The department has done a wonderful job at trying to keep within their means, if not below it. And, uh, so I think we're, I, I do think we're in good shape. But we'll monitor it now, go, starting now, we start monitoring it really closely as we get closer to year end. I hope to get you one of these, I hope, monthly, eventually monthly, if not monthly, and at the very least quarterly. So you'll be able to see how it evens out and we should be doing well.
I like the format. I like the way you set it out. It was great.
Thank you, Tom. One of the things that Sarah did really well when, when she made her reports was exactly what Ralph mentioned. She would bring in those areas that she herself was concerned, which really meant that she or the town manager was concerned. And that's really what we, we, we look not only to the, to the Director of Finance, but also to the town manager to say which accounts, even though they might be covered by the end of the year by another account, which are the ones that are concerning. And that gives us a better flavor for how the, how the town is working. Because as we all know, the incidence of income and expense vary so wildly that it's hard to make, make much out of these figures by ourselves.
Sure, uh, and I will, for the next report, I'll make sure I have that for you.
But there's nothing that jumps out.
Nothing that jumped out tremendously to me right now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve. Thanks, Pat. That wraps up the third quarter budget update unless there's any other questions or input. Now, we'll now move on to old business. I believe there's a, a, a motion that needs to be made.
I move to amend the March ninth, twenty twenty one motion to approve the street acceptance of Silver Fox Lane as shown on the as-built plan dated October twenty ninth, twenty twenty, surveyed by Paulus Smith Land Surveying the Islam metal planning department.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second roll call vote. I'll start with Ralph again. I'm sorry.
Pat, I saw you first.
I just, only for the purpose of making sure that discussion was held.
Yes, okay.
So all we're doing is just, um, if I'm correct, adding in, um, that it's as shown on the as-built plan. So we had missed that on the last time, so we want to make sure that that's in there. Is that correct?
Jean.
Jeanie?
So after the last, uh, that vote was taken, um, Bethany found that we couldn't release the bond because we were still not doing all the steps that we had to do to complete this process. We had to have an order of taken, taken, taking, signed by the full council. And you'll see the string of emails between Jesse and I to hammer all this up. So between Bethany and I, we tried to research everything that was going to pass, these things together. And Jesse's recommendation, first of all, is we had to retake the vote to be as more specific as we could about the property description in the vote. And that's why I added in that language. And also we have to have an order of taking, an order of taking with the description and then the legal description of the property. And we're still trying to get that from the client's attorney as of today. So once that document is prepared, I'll need each of your physical signature on that and then that will be recorded. Um, so there's a lot of other steps that were supposed to be taking place that we really weren't covering in the last vote.
Okay, thank you, Jeanie.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Marilyn?
Um, actually through the chair, could I direct one to Jeanie, please?
Yes, please.
Is this the last step for us, though, in terms of the council?
Yes, you know, your signatures will be the last step for you. So I'll have to have you actually come into the office. I'll let you know when that's prepared to sign off on that.
Because previous to our change in government, as the indication, as the information indicated, whenever we accepted a street, I mean, we went through meets and bounds and, and, you know, where it was exactly precisely located. And this seemed to be too easy.
Right. Yeah, it's got all the latitude, longitude, northerly, westerly, all that language of trying to get it, had not been provided to at this point.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? I see and hearing none. Roll call vote, Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Mike is present, but didn't, wasn't here for the conversation, so I don't know if we include him in the vote.
I've read all the documents and have followed, so I feel that I am in a position where I can vote on this. I'm a yes as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that motion carries. And since Mike is now present and we can see and hear him, I'll turn the meeting back over to Mike. We're on C2.
And thanks for holding down the fort, Tom and everyone else. That's technology. So under old business, under C2, the planning board recommendation for the special permit criteria zoning bylaw amendment. Before we open up for discussion, could I have a motion on that subject matter, please?
Sure, Mike. I motion to accept the planning board's recommendation of a zoning bylaw amendment to 7.2 special permits. 7.30 criteria, adding section I. All required state and local licenses must be acquired and kept current. Failure to meet this criterion is grounds for revocation of the special permit by the special permit granting authority.
I will second that.
Hey, the motion's been made and seconded. We can open up the floor for discussion.
So Mike, so if I'm correct, Jeannie, what we're doing is saying that we accept the fact that the planning board is making a recommendation that was different than what our language was that we sent to them.
Right.
Going forwards, we still hold the two readings with the public hearing and all.
Right. And I think the earliest we could do that would be the first meeting in May. And I believe the council discussed doing the general bylaw and zoning bylaw at the same time. Because this is relative to Kena licenses. Is that discussed prior?
I think we discussed it at one of the meetings, and that only makes sense considering they're both on the same subject. Do them both at the same time.
Right.
If someone has a question from the town, they're going to want to address both of them.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. We'll roll call vote. Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. We have no, nothing scheduled under new business this evening. We talked about action items for the next meeting. I'll defer back to Ralph's comment under council comments. Anybody else have any, anything under action items? Tom?
Yes, Mike, it's been several months since we addressed and spoke about, since we're on the subject of street takings, requesting a list of streets that fall under that purview and how we're going to deal with them. And I have not seen anything come forward in the last couple of months. So I like to put that on the agenda for next meeting to make sure we get that information.
The requests will be made. We have no executive session scheduled for this evening. We can plan on a meeting again in April. As we are in our budget season, we all know there are deadlines that we'll have to meet, so we can definitely plan on that. Other than that, there is no other business, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
And I move to adjourn.
I will second it.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. I don't believe there's any discussion pertaining to adjournment. So we'll roll call vote, starting with Tom?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Ralph?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. We're adjourned at 7:15.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Night.
Night, Mary.